Good morning, I'm sorry, good evening and welcome, welcome to the Monday, February 13th Board Meeting. Tonight, we're going to be discussing the IDEA hearing at 7 o'clock. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Here.
Mrs. Chapman?
Here.
Mr. Mack?
Here.
Mr. Postal? Mrs. Zurkey?
Here.
Take over from here.
Good evening, everyone. We're just going to go ahead and let you know how we allocate our funds for the IDEA. And the IDEA funds come from federal dollars. They give a lump sum to each state, and then each state decides how they distribute that to the districts. This is for students who are identified with a disability. And so there's a dollar figure that's given roughly from the state based on the number of students you have identified in your district. And you can see that we received this year for fiscal year '23 about $1,511,000 and some change. And the first part of that money, that $41,000 roughly, goes to our non-pubs. So our non-pubs that are located within the Berea City School District in our geographical area would be the Academy of St. Bartholomew and St. Mary. And they get a lump sum of that money based on how many students they have identified and they're serving in their district. So that goes out first, and then the remainder of that money, as you can see, goes towards salaries and benefits for staff who support our students directly, and that's within the Berea City School District. Similarly, we have IDEA funds that are dedicated towards preschool children, so early childhood, so our kids that are age three up until they go to kindergarten. And those students who are identified with disabilities, there's money funding for that as well, a much smaller amount, about $37,000. And that also goes directly towards salaries for support staff within the preschool program, in our district only. Questions? Yes.
Is the amount that we got, the $1.5 million that was allocated for our area, is that based on some kind of formula or size of the district?
There is a formula. I can't speak to that exact number. It's a little convol- I mean, it's very complicated. But ultimately, the sum of money the federal government gives to the state, and then the state decides how much money they want to give per student who is identified with a disability. So the state has to divide it up among all of the students who are identified across the state. And then they say, here's your money, here's how much you get Berea. The actual number of kids that are identified with a disability, it's based on a year in the rears. So it was based on October of '21's data, how many students we had identified impacts this fiscal year.
When a student has greater needs, for instance, when at Mid Park, there was a young man who had to have a full-time nurse. Does the state factor that in, or is that just an expense?
So not for these purposes, not for these funds. It's not that detailed. So the additional money, I don't know if Jill wants to speak any further to that, but it would not come out of these funds. We exceed our expenditures well over this amount, but this is a good chunk of money to help us support our services.
Above and beyond for those students, Mr. Mack, we can claim, if they're not our students, but they're attending here, and we're responsible for educating them, we can claim excess cost. And that's basically where we're billing back the resident school district directly for the cost of that kid. If we also have a kid that's ours that's very expensive, we can claim catastrophic costs on those kids, but it has to be over a certain dollar amount, like $27,000. That money comes out of a pool of money in the state of Ohio. We don't get dollar-for-dollar for catastrophic costs. We get what the appropriation is. Once everybody submits their catastrophic cost amounts, then they divide it out amongst all the districts. Last year, we got about 30%, 33% in catastrophic costs. They have up that amount with this new budget to 60%. They are taking a little bit of our special ed money off the top to help fund that, just a small portion of it. But yeah, so there are two other avenues where we can claim for special education.
Thank you.
Have a motion to adjourn?
No move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Aye.
Okay, moving straight into our regular meeting. Can we have a roll call, please? Here.
Mrs. Chapman?
Here.
Mr. Mack?
Here.
Mr. Postal? Mrs. Zurkey?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, for Section B, Special Recognition.
Good evening. I'm Brian Kessler, President of the Berea Federation of Teachers. We know that leadership is hard, and we know that you've had a change in your leadership at the Board. And given the traditions that we have in this district of working so well together and productively, several of the members of the union leadership felt it important that we come and say a few nice words to our now-former Board Presidents. So a few people are going to say some quick words.
Hello, I'm Bill Boone. I'm Vice President, BFT. I also teach here at the high school, American History and Resident Berea. So first of all, before I get to Anna, I'd like to congratulate Corey Ferris on her new role as Board President. I've been thoroughly impressed with her dedication since we worked together at the Bonn Campaign back in 2016, and she's proven herself to be a tireless advocate for public school education. So, good luck to you. But the main reason we're here is to take a moment to thank Anna Chapman for her years of service as Board President as she transitions into her new role. She's gained the admiration and respect of the BFT for her tireless advocacy for public school education over the years. In tumultuous times, it was reassuring to know we had an individual leading the school board who truly understood the modern challenges of teaching in a public school. She's deeply invested in our community and has consistently displayed public courage in speaking out for the welfare of all of our students. She has never used her position as a springboard for higher political aspirations or as a pulpit to foster division within our community. Thank you, Anna. Your commitment to our schools has been greatly appreciated. Thanks.
Hi. My name is Julie Yennis. I'm representing Berea Federation of Teachers and for Special Education, Director of Special Education. Anna, I just wanted to say thank you for so many things. Your time, your energy, your determination to make sure that everyone, every student in Berea City Schools can succeed. Every student. You've always been an advocate for all of us, I mean, all of us, at one time or another, whether it was students, teachers, parents, community members. And that's not easy to do. And I especially wanted to say thank you for all of your time that you spent with me as far as special needs students when we were designing and planning this high school. Anna took the time to sit with me and talk about what do our special needs students need, what isn't going to work, what is going to work. And that doesn't sound like a lot, but that means a lot to me professionally and personally. What else did I- I also wanted to just say, I guess, I hope you realize how much you mean to all of us. Thank you. These are for you.
Good evening. My name is Matt Petrus. I am a sixth-grade math teacher over at the middle school. I've known Mrs. Chapman for many years, since I've had two of her three students at Parknell. And my wife has worked with Anna when she was the president of the PTA at Grindstone and helped work on her election. And Anna, you have always been very visual, whether it be athletic events, academic events, in the buildings. And I think that's what I appreciate the most about you, is even, you know, three weeks ago, you were at the gymnastics senior night. You have no child doing gymnastics or anything like that, but it was a date night for you and John. And so I appreciate you guys coming out and showing the support that you do at those events and all the other events. And please continue the strong effort that you have brought here to the Berea City Schools. Thank you.
And finally, we'd like to recognize folks who are advocates of public education. And I have an award for you that I thought was given to you many years ago, because it was earned many years ago. But we found out last year that actually somehow you did not win this award. But this award is basically designed for someone like you, who advocates not only for public education, but for the child first, and then their family, and then the staff, the people who work in this district. You have been a fearless leader in an amazing time of transformation for this district, and you have led us through some very dicey waters. And many times, you're not appreciated in your time. So this is an opportunity to say thank you while it's still your time. But I am confident, as many of us move forward, we'll grow, even have more appreciation for all the things that you've done for all of us, but most especially for our kids, in providing the kind of leadership that keeps this district focused on the student and the problems that we face, rather than all of the petty things that you can be pulled into in public education. So I would like to present you with our Friend of Education Award that, again, was long overdue. And that's all I have to say.
Congratulations, Anna.
Thank you very much for the kind words. Appreciate it.
The next up is Public Participation. Do we have any? Okay. D, Board Recognition. Board Bravos. Would one of our members like to start?
I want to congratulate the girls and boys wrestling teams who competed in the duel at the school on Friday. Rick and I actually both attended on Friday afternoon and just loved seeing our students together, and so many staff members. And the kids did amazing. Congratulations to them and their coaches.
Mine, one of them is for the student body at the duel at the school. Hack Gym Pep Assembly, which oftentimes can be dicey, but the kids really got into it, created an electric atmosphere, and really, I think, helped the athletes who were there. I'm sure some of the athletes might have been nervous, but it was really a wonderful kind of coming together of all parts. That was nice. And then the others, to recent retirement, Gwen Cronica, she represents to me kind of the best of what the Berea District has been. She graduated from Mid Park back in 1980, started as a dishwasher in the cafeteria and worked her way up from office aide to different positions. I got to know her well when she was the Secretary for the Athletic Department at Park, and then she became Bayla's Principal at Mid, or Bayla's Secretary at Mid Park, and then moved over to the Board Office. So after over 30 years, she's retiring, and just has always been a person of character and candor, and I think that's really appreciated.
I would like to recognize many students who participated in competitions with our Polaris Satellite Program. And they're moving on to the state level, which is very exciting. Our Polaris Biomedical Science Satellite Program, so this is a Polaris program that the kids participate here in the building. And we had Naomi Melnick, Amelie Mockbee, Mackenzie Peck, Manveer Singh, Ariana Adamsick, Mackenzie Peck, Tiffany Talbot, Amelie Mockbee again, Paige Zednik, Ryland Evans, and Eden Gedamu. And then we had another group of students that participate in a different satellite program from Polaris, the Broadcasting and Video Production, Business Professional and Office Technology, and the Marketing and Entrepreneurship Programs. They participated in the Business Professionals of America Regional Competition. And there were several different categories. In the Intermediate Word Processing, we had Vera Patel, Alondra Calderon, and Adriana Cortez. In the Advanced Office Systems, Riley Schmitz, Entrepreneurship, Madison Hinton. And Presentation Team, also Vera Patel. Then in the Broadcasting and Video Production, we had Braden Kupac, Eliana Egans, Bradley Hyros, Lila Farsane, Eden Cridle, James Radachak, Lucas Roberts, Connor Stem, Ava Burlison, Courtney Nappick, Eva McCarthy, John Elam, Kariellis Massa, and Madison Matilla. And in the Marketing and Entrepreneurship, we had Willow Talentire, Jack Stanisek, Austin Shaw, Joel Petrie, Renee LaPerga, Mackenzie Bowers, Brody Wolf, Corbin Johnson, and Giovanni Gardner. And in the Virtual Multimedia and Promotion Individual Competition, Chabasorn Purnabun, and Brianna Champion. Congratulations to all of them. And then also, I wanted to shout out to Ms. Thomas and Mrs. Byers at Grindstone. Their third graders created a Microsoft Flip video about addition and subtraction strategies. First, they completed a planning sheet, and then they recorded. And I would be very interested to see their video about addition and subtraction, because I hear it's changed a lot since I learned it many, many moons ago. So thank you and congratulations.
Okay, I'd like to give a shout out to the Berea Mid Park Middle School Builders Club, who are currently collecting T-shirts, sweatshirts, sweatpants, PJ bottoms, and any old fleece material for the creation of dog toys for the local shelters. So if you happen to have anything, any closets that you can go through, and there's some old T-shirts, they're happy to take anything with holes in it, anything that's worn, thin, and even stained. But if you could wash the materials, there is a box outside the main office, and that is a project that I look forward to hearing more about. When I shared the post on my Facebook page, it was shared several times beyond me. And I just checked today, and there were 907 views. So it's a fun activity that a lot of people are excited about, and hopefully, they'll have all the T-shirts and materials that they ever needed to make lots of dogs and puppies happy, because there's nothing better than happy children and happy puppies. All right.
Mrs. Ferris, I forgot to wish Mike Draves a happy 50th birthday today. Somebody told me.
That is a Bravo, isn't it?
Thank you. Thank you.
And along that same lines, we're on to Superintendent's Update.
Thanks. I would request that it's called the Assistant Superintendent's Update.
Today it is, yes.
Slash Business Manager, which is actually kind of what this has to do with tonight. One of the first things that Mike Sklovatschka talked to me about when he left for Polaris was he talked to me about the condition that Lou Groza Field was in. And I know for those of residents, you might feel like it's brand new, but actually, it's finishing up its 11th year. And anyone who knows much about turf, and we have a gentleman here from Forever, sorry, Forever Lawn and Sports Grass, John Regus here today, it does have about a 10-year life expectancy. So we needed to do something. And I have some special guests here today. They're going to actually help us make the announcement. I'd like to bring up Jenner Takansik, the Vice President of Community Relations from the Cleveland Browns, to help us with this announcement.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much to the school board for letting us join you this evening for this special announcement. We know that the Berea City School District is dedicated to excellence, integrity, and purpose, and that is what we're hoping to do as we address a current need in the local community here, right in our backyard. So thank you for having us. As we think of the Cleveland Browns, you know, as mentioned, we're very dedicated to youth and high school football, and we would like to recognize Forever Lawn for joining us on this new venture as we open a new chapter in our books and our partnership with the Berea City School District. When we think of the Cleveland Browns, we are really focused on three things. We are focused on building a consistently winning football team, supporting our fans, and really, truly giving back to the community in meaningful ways. We have been led by our great ownership team with Dean Jimmy Haslam, Whitney and JW Johnson, and they have really, truly led our vision to help give back in the local community. You may have followed the news over the years. You know, this field, while the current one that's here now for Lou Groza Field was installed in 2012, it was such a special moment. You know, 11 years ago, we wanted to carry on the legacy of Lou Groza. We know what he meant to the community, a Hall of Fame player for us in 1974, was with the team for 21 seasons. Just a remarkable journey and legacy he had with us. And the field was so important, and knowing that the shape that it's in currently right now, and that there is a need, and that there are athletes, there's scholars, there's band members, there's really crucial milestone moments that the school can enjoy if the field was refurbished and replaced. You know, the Browns just know that it's something that needs to happen, and it needs to happen as soon as it possibly can. So with the Cleveland Browns, we're proud to partner with Forever Lawn, we're proud to partner with the Berea City School District to announce that we will be installing our 14th field here this year under the vision of Dean Jimmy Haslam, JW, and Whitney Johnson to make sure that the kids, students, faculty, coaches can all thrive and really, really have some proud memories on the football field. That football field is not just a football field. It's going to be lined for multiple sports. It's going to serve a purpose to help the neighbors and the local community. And with all of us together in this room, and all the teachers and administrators, we're really happy to present what the new field will be looking like. And I would like to bring up Mike again to share what this timeline looks like and how we can further make an impact in our local community. But thank you so much on behalf of the Cleveland Browns, Forever Lawn, this city, and Berea City School District. Thank you so, so much for your leadership in making this possible and joining with us on this next journey as we work together to help others.
So this is the field. We're so excited about the look of it, that Forever Lawn helped us design, and working with the Cleveland Browns and all of their personnel. As you can tell, it's a little bit different. It has the dark green and the light green, which I think really pops. And obviously, it has our Titan colors, but also still remains true to the Lou Groza name with Lou Groza Field, and then the Cleveland Brown helmets on there as well to thank them for their very generous donation. So what the timeline looks like is, right after I get done talking here, we have an MOU for the Board to consider for working with the Cleveland Browns. And we're hoping that Forever Lawn will begin, then once this gets hopefully passed this evening, then they can begin work production on the field. And by April, we're hopeful that we can begin construction with a completion date of June 1st of 2023, which is so, it's really ambitious. And we thought it was ambitious, but Forever Lawn and the Cleveland Browns basically said, that's not a problem. We will have that done. We actually, talking with Mr. Justice, our Athletic Director, have a June 6th, I believe it's June 6th, right, John, football camp for youth that's going to be held on the field. And we're going to be working, hopefully, with our football coach and with the Lou Groza football youth that also plays on that field, and hopefully the Cleveland Browns, to be able to also dedicate the field on that day. And so we're really, really excited. I need to thank some people for making this happen. The first thing I would say is that John Justice with Keith Wilson, I see that Hannah Lee is actually here today. So I know that John and Keith Wilson from Lou Groza Football met with Hannah and took with them our ask, and working with the Cleveland Browns and seeing if they would be willing to help us, as it's such a really big expense. And so we had letters from all three mayors, from Mayor Orkut, Mayor Costelli, and Mayor Kleem, as well as Trace Wheeler, our superintendent, asking the Cleveland Browns if they would be willing to help. And we know that they had already helped the first time, $250,000 from the Cleveland Browns Foundation in 2011, 2012. And so it was a big ask. And so we're so thankful that they're willing to do this again and be such good partners. You know, Berea, Brook Park, and Middleburg Heights aren't just any other cities, the Cleveland Browns. It's where they are, and they're investing into our community, our schools, and also our youth. Those kids who play on the field will also become future Titans. It's really important for them to have a really safe field for them to be able to play on. So I'd like to thank everyone from the Cleveland Browns who's here today, and thank Forever Lawn and John for being here as well. I would like to thank a couple people from our team who have made this happen, John Justice and also Christina Capretta for their work with the Cleveland Browns and getting us to this point. But we're just really, really excited. And once again, Jenner, thank you very much. And please express our gratitude to the Haslums. Thank you.
Okay.
If that's possible. We're going to vote on the MOU, and then we'd like to get a picture. Yep.
Okay, item number two. It's recommended that the Berea Board of Education approve the Memorandum of Understanding between the Berea City School District and the Cleveland Browns, as shown in the exhibit below.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Take a break and maybe get some photos. Take a break and maybe get some photos.
Before our Browns friends leave, I just wanted to share, I was at the original dedication in 2012, and it was a very special moment for the community. And I've had, well, Lou Groza was a family friend, my husband's family, growing up. So, it was very special to us. But both my boys have played football on that field, my daughter cheered on that field, and it's just so special that, you know, we're able to continue this partnership and that we can have Lou Groza still representing it. So, thank you very much, we appreciate it so much.
Okay, item number three, consent agenda. It's recommended that items E4 through E16 be approved as part of the consent agenda, unless a Board of Education member wishes to have an item removed.
So moved.
Second.
Is this where I say something?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm new up here. There's, it's all routine personnel items, the one thing I would point out is Mike Pellegrino, former principal at Ford Middle School, and before he went over to the Board Office, is retiring at the end of the month, and he's certainly going to be missed. I really did not know Mike very well before I got here, but I will tell you, extremely witty, extremely bright, and he will be missed in our meetings.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes. Item 17, consent agenda, it's recommended that E18, E21 be approved as part of the consent agenda, unless a Board of Education member wishes to have an item removed. So moved. These are just regular renewals of...
Yeah, the CCP, Mrs. Mrs. Wheeler asked that they all kind of get put on at the same time. There is still one outstanding that hadn't gotten it to us, it was Cleveland State, so that should be coming soon. And the other stuff is, is just kind of routine things that we have to put on every year. I, I will mention, yeah, yeah, that's, that's quite it.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Number 22, volunteers. The Board of Education acknowledges the volunteers listed below for the 2023 Disney trip. The volunteers are licensed health professionals who have reviewed and agreed to follow policy 5330 in securing and administering medications to students while on the trip. Background checks were completed. So moved.
Second.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Number 23, summer camp. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the hourly rates and camp, summer camp schedule, as shown in the exhibits. So moved.
And second.
This is just a update to the rates and...
Yeah, we're once again going to offer summer camp, three and four-day summer camp for our community. The, the rates, we did, we did change the hourly rates, quite frankly, to become competitive so that we could get employees to, to work there. Mrs. Wheeler made it an effort, though, it's not, we're not seeking profit out of it, we're simply trying to make sure that we're able to cover our cost, and so she was careful to make sure that we budgeted it appropriately.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Number 24, preschool tuition. Recommended that the Board of Education approve the increase of the district preschool tuition costs by $25 per month for residents and non-residents affected July 1st, 2023. So moved. Second.
It has been several years since we've actually raised our preschool tuition rates, I think the last time was 2018, January. We had our preschool supervisor do a survey of neighboring districts. We were a little low on that survey, so in order to keep up and cover costs, we've decided to increase it $25 a month. It takes it from 200 to 225 for residents, and 210 to 235 for non-residents.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Number 25, approval of district-sponsored overnight trip. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the following district-sponsored overnight field trip, March 10th, 2023 through March 12th, 2023, for the National Track Meet in New York, New York.
Second.
We have a student who qualified for this National Track Meet in New York City, and he's going to be going with Coach Nygro to be able to compete. Coach Nygro has, I don't believe, ever taken anyone to that meet, I don't know if you have, Mr. Mack, but they're really excited about it, and so, just put that on there for approval.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Number 26, student transportation. It's recommended that the Board of Education enter into an agreement for the 22-23 school year between Brea City School District and School Transportation Company, Inc., TLC, for transporting students at the written request of the district for any student requiring transportation and vehicles, which meets all safety and transportation laws and standards as shown below in the exhibit. Second.
This is, we, we first reached out to Suburban, who we do have a contract with, they are, they're booked. Transportation is, is difficult in, in a lot of districts, and so, a lot of them are using Suburban, so we had to find another carrier to be able to help us out with our, with a homeless student. And we, we, we've had quite a few of them this year, and so, unable to kind of do that in-house, we're going to go with this company to be able to help us with, with that issue.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Number 27, resolution authorizing 22, I'm sorry, 2023 to 24 membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association. Recommended that the Brea Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing membership in the OHSAA for the 23-24 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, just yearly, we have to let them know that we're going to be a part of the OHSAA next year, and this is typically on the agenda around this time.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Number 28, Ohio Guidestone Contract. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the contract between the Brea City School District and Ohio Guidestone for the 22-23 school year, as shown below in the exhibit. So moved.
Second.
I will say, this was for this school year, you might note that, the reality is that we had been trying to get this from, from Ohio Guidestone, and it finally came through, and so, it's, it's on the agenda now.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Number 29, school psychologist merger of understanding, memorandum of understanding, I'm sorry. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the memorandum of understanding with the Brea Federation of Teachers and the Brea Board of Education for the purpose of adding current certified employees represented in the collective bargaining agreement, as shown in the exhibit. So moved.
Second.
One of the issues that we've had, our, our psychologists have been through the ESC, Northeast Ohio ESC, it's becoming increasingly difficult to attract psychologists, we wanted to bring them into our, into our contract, it's one of the things that they wanted as well, and so, they've worked on that over this past year to be able to try and bring them in, so this MOU would bring them into our contract, we believe, give us a better opportunity to attract psychologists to our district.
I'd like to thank Jill, our treasurer, for providing for the board the numbers behind the, the, as it is versus how it will be, so that we could quantify what this change would do to the budget, and I'm pleased that it's, it's very reasonable, and that if we can find good people to be part of the district, then, then it's a good thing.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Treasurer's update.
The monthly financial report is linked into the agenda tonight. We'll start with expenditures first, and then we'll go back to the revenue. The expenditures are trending right where they should be this time of year, there are no real concerns as compared to the forecast, or compared to, you know, we, it always compares to last year, what happened. Expenditures are trending down a little bit, if you remember in the forecast, where we had a lot of retirees, and we replaced those retirees with, you know, younger, less degree, you know, teachers, so that saved a lot of money when we replaced those. So expenditures are trending right where, where they need to be. On the revenue side, I mentioned, this is for January, we started to get tax collections again in January, tax collections are, were down for the payment in January compared to what they normally were. They came in at about, for the general fund, about $2 million, 2.5 million, and normally they're about $4 million at this time. We just got our next tax advance notice today, it came, and we'll get that payment on Wednesday, and that payment's a little lower than what I expected, it's out about $24 million, and it should be about $25 million, so we do have a final payment in March, so hopefully by then, collections will be done, and the Treasurer's Office will be processing those at a fast rate, because I did read that article where they were a little behind on processing the payments, so nothing to be too concerned of as of yet, we need to wait till we get that final March payment to, to see where our tax collections are coming in at. If you note, last year, we did receive large delinquency payments, and we did also have, one was a large commercial property, so our tax collections were up last year because of those delinquencies, and we had a large commercial property come off abatement, where we finally received taxes off of that. So, the numbers were a little skewed last year on our taxes, but we definitely need to wait till the March payment, so we, so we have a conversation about where the taxes ended up.
A lot of times, it can just be a matter of...
Yeah.
The timing of...
Timing, yep, yep.
Okay, item number two, consent agenda. It's recommended that items F3 through F8 be approved as part of the consent agenda, unless a board member wishes to have an item removed. So moved. Second.
All routine items again on the, the consent agenda tonight, we had a number of gifts and donations and come in, and I want to thank everybody for those gifts and donations, we had some printers donated from our, our vendor ComDoc, we had some money from the Brea City Club for Grindstone Elementary Lunch Program to pay off any debt, and Veterans of Foreign War for the veterans program, so we do thank everybody for, for giving that money, we, we, we need it, and we gladly accept it.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Next item is minutes approval. It's recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the January 23rd, 2023 Regular Meeting, as shown in the exhibit.
Second.
Are there any changes or... Roll call, please.
Mrs. Zurkey?
Yes.
Mr. Mack?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Item number two, legislative update.
A lot of the same as from our last meeting, the House has begun work on the biennial budget that the governor presented on January 31st, and there are several education-related provisions in it, continuing the phase-in of Year 3 and 4 of the Fair School Funding Plan, providing funding for any public or private schools that want to hire an SRO, providing $100 million to launch new in-demand career tech programs and industry-recognized credential programs across the state, increasing the eligibility for Ed Choice vouchers up to 400% of the federal poverty level, requiring ODE to create professional development coursework rooted in evidence-based strategies for effective literacy instruction, and provide funding to schools and districts to incorporate the literacy training in their classrooms, requiring ODE to support up to 100 additional literacy coaches in schools and districts with the lowest reading proficiency, continuing funding for tutoring services, providing additional College Credit Plus funding to provide additional training for teachers to instruct classes on their high school campuses. Those education-related items will be considered in the Finance Subcommittee on Primary and Secondary Education, and they're hoping that it'll be out of committee by the end of April. Also, Senate Bill 1, I believe I mentioned last time, was Senate Bill 178 in the last legislature, which failed, and now they've reintroduced it, and that's the one to create the Department of Education and Workforce, with a cabinet-level director appointed by the governor and approved by the Senate. And then also, Senate Bill 1, which is to expand the eligibility for Ed Choice scholarships to all students, beginning with scholarships for next school year, as well as Senate Bill 14, to allow school districts to employ veterans that have met certain requirements to employed, to be employed as teachers without licenses. There are three priorities that public education advocates such as us should focus on. One is the full phase-in of that Fair School Funding Plan, as well as opposing Senate Bill 11, which is the expansion of the Ed Choice vouchers, and opposing Senate Bill 1, which is taking away the state Board of Education's duties and moving most of its responsibilities to someone appointed by the governor. There was an article on Cleveland.com last week by Renee Willis, who's the superintendent of Richmond Heights Schools, which was one of, of, probably one of the best articles I've ever read, that explains really well how vouchers affect public schools, and if you haven't read it, I can send you the link, but it, it's, it's really incredible to, to read. One of the things, and I texted Jill right away to find out what our number was, you know, she mentions the state voucher program has already drained $350 million from public schools, and her district in Richmond Heights receives approximately $1,000 per student from the state. So, I texted Jill, and I asked, well, what do we get from the state? And she said, pretty much the same thing, $1,009.53, but they want to give $7,500 to students to go somewhere other than public school, but they only give us $1,000, and the rest of our money is from local taxpayers.
And that was my follow-up question, and I think that's part of what people don't really understand when the voucher argument comes into play, is they think it's dollar for dollar, but it's not. It's, we are, we are made to give the full amount, but we are not getting the full amount from the state. And so, you really are taking money away from public school students, children with seats in the public schools, that our taxpayers are paying for to send them to private. If it was dollar for dollar, then go where you want, but you are literally taking money away from local taxpayers to send your child to alternate school.
And it's important to remember that private schools can deny admissions to students. They can deny admission to special needs students, to LGBTQ students, to anyone that they want to for any reason, and public schools are open to all, and we educate all. It's also important to know that originally voucher programs were created so that students, low-income students and students of color could have a better choice for their education, and, and that's really not what has happened. The majority of vouchers have gone to white students who attend their neighborhood religious schools, so it's not really serving the purpose for which it was originally created. And then, you may have gotten an email from OSBA with the Legislative Platform for this year, I had Jill print it out for us.
Thanks. Thanks.
Because it is quite long. So they said if there are anything that we would like amended in this before it gets adopted, we have to pass a resolution by May 31st. So if everybody can just take a look at it and let me know what you think.
Thank you.
Item number, item number three, Board of Education Committee reports.
Okay. On February 3rd, I attended another session of the Safety and Security Committee. Each time this committee meets, I'm struck by the depth of the work and preparation the district puts in to create a plan for the safest possible environments for our students and staff. Earlier this year, I had taken part in 16 hours worth of training involving threat assessment along with many other staff members to develop building threat assessment plans and teams in order to be alert and vigilant to any potential situations. And this training has already been shown to assist the buildings. This past meeting involved the coordination of all three communities, police and fire departments, school personnel, and other regional agencies to prepare for three days of intense training regarding active shooters in the buildings. And they'll be focusing on a middle school, a high school, and one of the elementaries. And this will occur right after the conclusion of the school year. In addition to the three days at the end of the school year, teachers will receive Stop the Bleed training over the course of the summer before the start of the new school year. I find these meetings to be really solemn affairs. Countless resources, both human and financial, are dedicated to the prevention of tragedy, to prevent tragedies from occurring. Sadly, we know the school shootings have occurred elsewhere. I know our district is doing everything it can to make the schools as safe as possible.
Thank you.
Just another reminder that the Education Foundation auction is happening March 5th through the 9th. And so if anybody's interested in being a patron, they're looking for patrons right now, but definitely support the auction when that happens online again this year.
Thank you. And then lastly, in the absence of Neil Postal, I've asked Doug Schwind, who is our other delegate for the Polaris School, to come and give us an update. I know they had a meeting.
At the January Polaris meeting, Dr. Neil Postal was voted president of the Polaris School Board, and Mrs. Michelle Bissell was voted vice president, and she's from the Strongsville School District. There was a resolution which was approved. It was for the expansion of Polaris to other districts. And based on that resolution, Polaris has invited Lakewood Schools to become a partner with Polaris. And there's a few reasons why they did this. And they can increase their satellite footprint with additional real estate. They don't have the facilities currently to, a lot of the programs they have waiting lists for. And so with these additional facilities that Lakewood already has, because they have their own career tech-type training programs, and so they will have more places for Polaris to conduct programs. Then also, it'll expand some of the curricular, curriculum opportunities in programs, because there's some programs that they have that Polaris doesn't have, and vice versa. So it'll be a benefit to both. And obviously, it'll be an increase in revenue based on, there're going to be levies that will have to be approved by Lakewood, you know, if the school district wants to join. This is going to be a process. I believe they said it's probably going to take maybe about two years, once Lakewood has, has accepted. And then there'll be a process involved for it. On the 12th, there was an open house at Polaris for the evening classes, and they also, in the mail, everybody should have probably got their abbreviated catalogs, a lot of it's online mostly now. So there's a lot of good programs, career tech programs there that people should maybe look into if they're looking to change their careers or something like that. And one of the interesting things, and this was actually at the December meeting, and I don't know if Dr. Postal mentioned it, but it was something that was very interesting to me, was the career guidance that they have there. And they do exit interviews with the seniors, and basically, they're asking them, hey, do you have a plan? And then they actually do interviews earlier in the school year. Do you have a plan for after graduation? And if a student says, yeah, I'm going to go to college, or I'm going to go in the military, or I'm going to go get some other vocational training, or I want to get a job in HVAC because that's what I took, or something like that, you know, they, they keep track of that. The kids that say, geez, you know, I really don't know what I want to do. So they follow up with them, and they try and get them, you know, some steps for after graduation, point them in the right direction, which I thought was really interesting. And, and I think that's part of Polaris's success. They also approved, there was approval to issue a notice of public bid for the Veterinary Science Lab. They're going to do some expansion and re-equipping there, and that's going to be really, really add a lot to that program. In 2022, they shared with us, in 2022, they got a grant from Stanley Tools. It was $50,000 worth of tools. I mean, they brought pallets full of mechanics socket sets, hand tools for construction, toolboxes. And it was actually, Dr. Postal had read somewhere about it, and he let the superintendent know, and they filed the paperwork and got this grant. And then they were invited to apply again, and they're going to get $50,000 in cash. I believe it's for this year. And they were going to use that for the welding students and some of the other curriculum to buy some tools. And one of the really great, great things was that they have conditional approval for an LPN program. And they're, the administration's met with Southwest General, they're going to be partnering up with them on some things, I think, some financial support as well as mentoring, maybe internships or clinicals. And so this will be a one-year program after, after, it'll be a day program. But really, what's neat is the kids that are currently in the pre-nursing program, they get first right of refusal for a spot in the program. I think they said they were either going to do 20 or 25 students. And, and so within a year after graduating from high school, these kids can be LPNs. And then they can either, if they want to pursue higher education, and they're also looking at partnering with another local university for a bachelor's program after the LPN, almost like a two-plus-two or something type of a program, which I was really amazed with, all, all the great things they have going on there. And I think that's pretty much, that's all I have. Thank you.
Awesome. We are truly lucky to have that in our, within our own community. Item number four, were there any Board of Education comments?
I did want to follow up a little bit with the safety and security thing, that take a few moments to share some thoughts. I retired from teaching in 2012, and at the end, we had a few lockdown drills toward the end of the career, and we'd make sure our doors were locked, and that was really about it, and we'd stay quiet. But nowhere near the intensity that's there now, from the Alice Training a few years ago to the Run, Hide, Fight Training that the kids go through. We presently do with our, we presently do with our students, times have changed. In addition to teaching, reading and writing and arithmetic and all those curricular things that are still expected, our kids live with harsh reality preparing for what might happen. Our teachers, both veteran and novice, who went to school to help kids, or help students learn and grow, also need to be trained in how to stop the bleeding if someone in their classroom is wounded. Thinking about that, it's just kind of mind-boggling. Our students and staff walk into a different environment than they did 15 years ago, and I did back in the 60s and 70s. And our staff does a remarkable job of balancing the intensity of today's classroom and culture to serve our kids day in and day out. I just think, I think they deserve our appreciation.
Thank you. Public participation for non-agenda items? Do we have any speakers? Okay. And we'll do an adjournment? Do we have a motion? Second. Roll call, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.